Hello. Today is part of our What's That About special interview coverage. We're excited to have I Al Zubey, a candidate running for Cambridge City Council. Thanks for coming on our show.
Thank you for having me. I'm really excited to talk with you.
Great. Can you tell us a little bit about how you came to Cambridge and what your background is?
Yeah, so a little bit about myself, my name is I Al Zubey. I use the she/her pronouns and I was born in Jordan and immigrated with my family to the US when I was young. We moved around a lot, so I didn't really feel a sense of community until I came to Cambridge as a student in 2019. So it was then in which I started to learn and understand the power of community, especially moving forward on progress in terms of issues related to social, social justice, racial justice and economic justice. So I kind of position myself today, especially having ran in 2023, in a very interesting time in the US where we're under the Trump administration again. And there are so many fears and anxieties right now around our political landscape. And so one way that folks turn to find that security and that comfort is through our local government. So I want to be able to be someone that folks know can meet the moment and help bring some of the issues to light and build a vision for Cambridge that is centered around dignity and affordability for everyone.
Great. What's your favorite part of living in Cambridge? Do you have any like favorite neighborhoods or places that you go to?
Oh, that's such a fun question. I'd be curious to hear yours too. Um, I think, I think it's probably the diversity of food and culture and languages in the city. I didn't get to experience this kind of community when I was moving around. And like, for example, like eating at Hellmann's, which is an Afghani restaurant. And then we have Ethiopian restaurants and we have this, we have a Saint Anthony, I believe, parish that speaks in Portuguese and teaching the faith backgrounds. So we have such a diverse array of cultures and languages that I think make this city feel like home. And that's what I really appreciate appreciate about it. I live in Cambridge Port, so I feel biased to want to say, hey, Cambridge Port is my favorite neighborhood. But it's not to say there are so many distinct neighborhoods that bring to light so many different things. Like, for example, the port reminds me a lot of the work that I've done in sports or the Baldwin community, or we have Central Square, which is home to the arts and essentially our, our business district in a way. It's where a lot of our culture and life is. So I feel like there are just so many things I could just keep listing off, but I definitely do love the diversity of this community.
What kind of work did you used to do in sports?
So I've done a lot of community-led work in sports and recently do management work in a faith-based group. So I've done nonprofit-related work. I've done work on Harvard's campus in terms of building access to sports for young people and bridging those two together. Because I believe that sports are a universal language that helps us bring down a lot of the barriers to having difficult conversations, similar to the arts in that way, right? Like, sometimes we have a tough time having a conversation about racial justice, for example. And I've learned growing up that sports can be such a beautiful avenue to curating a community while also taking the time to be vulnerable with another, with each other when it comes to, when it comes to water breaks or when it comes to warm-ups or cooldowns and things like that. So I've been a fan of sports for a while and appreciate its universality.
Great. That's cool. Yeah, um, yeah, I used to run track and stuff and you'd certainly get a bunch of, a bunch of different kinds of people in all the different events. And yeah, it's just, it's just, it's a lot of fun hanging out before or after events.
There you go. I'm curious, which, which track events did you run or do?
I did anything from the 800 to 5,000 meters running. Yeah.
Wow. I, I know when I did track in high school, we really looked up to the people who ran the 400 meter and the 800 meter because it was kind of that middle spot where you're not necessarily a long-distance runner and you're not a sprinter.
Yeah. 400 is too fast for me. But yeah, um, so you've kind of already answered this, but um, why are you running for the city council and what would be your highest priority issues if you get on there?
So yeah, like, like you said, I mentioned really wanting to run on creating a city that is dignified and affordable for everyone. And I centered this around the fact that, you know, no one should have to worry about making rent, for example. No one should have to worry about getting around safely. No one should have to worry about being able to afford food. So I think that as a city, we have to step up to make it, make that vision real. And especially when we're under the Trump administration right now and there are a lot of fears around even just being able to navigate public spaces. So I have that experience as being someone who's rent burdened, as someone who uses a bike, as someone who uses public transportation, like the number one bus and the MBTA's red lines and other, other lines as well. So I know those experiences firsthand. And I also come from a background of doing organizing work for youth-led movements like March For Our Lives in terms of gun control reform. So I have a bit of experience both on the national level and on the local level in terms of doing work to just bring neglected voices to the table and advocate for real policy changes. And in terms of advocating for what specific policies my, my campaign is focusing on is the first and the most important is creating more permanently deeply affordable housing. The second is making the number one bus free. And in light of Daily Table closing, I definitely want to be able to explore if we can create the first city-run grocery store. I've talked to a few residents in terms of what Daily Table meant for them. And I used to shop at Daily Table, so that's also an important one that I want to explore as well.
Did you follow, I, I know they were looking at at least making number one bus part of the pilot for free fares a few years ago. Did you follow any of that and where, how that ended up? Cause I, I kind of fell off the table.
Yeah, so we, yeah, as you said, we've had conversations about the number one bus being free and being in partnership with the city of Boston. We just have to have the political will to move it. The study that was done in terms of the cost and the investment required for the number one bus landed in at about one to about 1.5 million, I believe, a year. So it wouldn't be a big cost to invest in free access to a line that is so popular for so many people, whether they're people who live in our city, who come to work in our city. So there's just a fundamental approach to like, things we can improve on the sustainability side. Because you have to think like people who can't live in the city, their carbon footprint of them having to navigate into the city to work because they can't afford to live here is just as much within our hands. So the number one bus is just a piece of how we can make that more accessible and sustainable.
Yeah. What about some of the other Cambridge-only buses, like the 69 or, you know, some of those buses or, yeah, the ones that cross? I mean, is the number one bus because that's the biggest thing, you know, the most ridership?
Yeah, it's one of the more popular buses, but it's not to say that I'm not willing to explore other buses, especially, especially ones that connect north to south. We have, we have the Easy Ride Bus, which we, I believe, just recently funded more. And that kind of connects to Kendall Square area, East Cambridge area, down into Cambridge Port, which is amazing. We need more of that in the city. So I definitely am open to exploring other buses as well.
Okay. Where, where do you work and how do you get there? And kind of a follow-up, if you commute, is there anything you see on your commute that would, that, um, you know, you think we should change to make that, to make things easier?
Yeah, so my most recent, like my main commutes are to Harvard Square, which I was doing work in social impact. But now I'm also doing teaching assistant work. So my main commutes are using my bike, which I usually use Putnam Ave, which is one of, I like to think one of the dangerous roads for bikers because it is a pretty narrow road. So in terms of biking, I understand what it's like to be a biker on the road. I also hold that I know some of the experiences of people who are pedestrians or drivers are navigating a tricky road situation where some bikers don't respect the rules of the road. And we need to create a culture around how we can all be mindful of each other when we're using the road as a shared space. So I definitely want to push for bike lanes and have a commitment to making sure there are safety measures put in place, the biggest being a separation of the road and the bike lanes. But also making sure pedestrians are able to have designated crosswalks at dangerous intersections. Like I'm thinking DeWolfe Street in Mount Auburn, for example. I know this, I'm familiar with it because of the Harvard community. It's a pretty dangerous intersection, so making sure we also use other tools to ensure the safety of other people on the road as well is something that I'd want to work on. I also use a lot of the red line. I was back in 2023, I remember when the red line was, I don't know, it felt like a 20-minute ride between Central Square and Harvard Square. So it's good to see that there's been improvement between the red line on certain stations and stops. But I definitely want to also be working in conjunction on the state level in terms of state legislators and also the MBTA administration and staff on how we can increase our access and be an advocate from the city council side on how we can do that.
Great. So it sounds like you support the cycling safety ordinance, finishing that part of the bike lane network?
Correct.
Yeah. Do you think Vision Zero, you know, the Cambridge really got behind that a while ago, the city goal of zero traffic fatalities, do you think that's possible and you think we're doing enough there?
I definitely think we can always be doing more in terms of a lot of issues. But Vision Zero was created essentially to reduce and essentially eliminate the number of fatalities that we have on our roads and then to increase our safety mechanisms that we have as well. There is a lot, like if you go into the Vision Zero outline, there, the city goes into different forms of things that we can do in terms of making ours, our roads safer. Like in particular, I'm thinking about things like traffic calming or decreasing our, our mileage per, our mileage, like our MP, our MPH, like within our zones, like so are like down to 20 or 25 so that folks feel safer, making sure that we can create safe routes to schools for bikers and for pedestrians, making sure that there's accessibility on our sidewalks. Because I know there are people in Cambridge who have a hard time navigating our sidewalk infrastructure. So Vision Zero is a lot of work that we can be doing. I definitely, it'll keep our hands busy. Do I think it's feasible to tackle them? Absolutely. We just have to have the intention and the will to want to engage with it in depth and also make sure that we use our resources in a way that adequately addresses different components. Like biking is separate from pedestrians at times, which is separate from our educational system and how we connect our road systems to our schools.
Are you aware, just real quick, are you aware that, um, I believe it's Fairmont Street in Cambridge Port is just, was just turned into kind of a shared street where they changed the pavement color? And supposedly it's a shared street with cars and bikes and, and people walking. Are you, do you think, um, you know, there's a lot of cities in Europe where there is pedestrian zones or shared streets like that. Would you support something like that?
Absolutely. We have an initiative in the city, I believe, called Open Streets that we've done in the past to open up a few popular streets. I would want to explore that again on streets, like you mentioned, Fairmont Street is an example and also other popular streets, whether we explore areas like Central Square or Harvard Square, which have so much room to become hubs. And in that way, it can actually vitalize, like re-stimulate and vitalize their local economy, which right now is also struggling a lot. We have, I believe, over 100, 100 vacant storefronts. So that's another piece of how like open streets can both affect our community, our sense of community, but also our business district.
Do you have a, let's go to that vacant commercial space issue. Do you have a plan or thoughts on how we should address the, those vacant spaces in the city? Especially in like Central Square and Harvard Square?
Yeah, so yeah, like I mentioned to you, I believe we're about over 100 vacant storefronts. And I think the percentage right now from the city is about 50% are longer, are coined longer-term vacancies, which I believe is at around two years or more that they have not been leased out. So we've got a hefty amount of places that we can use to be able to uplift our local economy. One way we can do that is on the state level. There have been conversations about what would it mean for us to have a vacancy tax rate on the state level and work with state legislators. So I have been in conversation on the possibilities and feasibility of that. So in that way, I believe city council members play such a vital role to being advocates for our city on the state level and being in partnership with state reps like Mike Connelly, for example, or Marjorie Decker or Steve Owens on what we can do to push that forward. There are also other ways in which we can use mechanisms. For example, I'm thinking of how when a business goes into place, there are requirements for what that business needs to do when it begins in terms of the relationship between the owner and the, and the leasing. And essentially, I would want to explore, what would, what would it be like to do something of the reverse, to be able to set requirements for if a storefront is vacant? Like what can we put in place to say, hey, like if you're going to be vacant for an X period of time, here's what we need to make sure happens? This city, I believe, has explored something along those lines in terms of at least window space. But we have to be mindful of conversations on equity because small business owners aren't the same as corporate owners or larger business owners. So I'd want to be able to navigate that conversation mindful of, of the different experiences of our, our business owners.
Let's, I know you have a hard out in 15 minutes. Let's get into housing. Of course, I don't have need to tell, I don't need to tell anyone, prices are expensive. You can't buy or rent in the city without like having, seems like your own personal wealth. Lately, the council has tried to address that with citywide upzoning, affordable housing overlay, removing parking minimums, you know, and allowing ADUs. First of all, do you approve all those changes?
Yeah, it's a, it's a tough question because we did make some progress with the multifamily zoning. I do want to be mindful though that my approach to housing, our platform is centered essentially around bringing a nuance to the table that we don't see in the housing conversation.
Okay.
Because a part of what we see with deregulation and the upzoning that could potentially lead to risk is conversations on gentrification and what it means for low-income communities who the land prices could go up and kick those community members out if they can't afford to live there. But on the other side, I want to be able to push back against conversations around how we envision what our city looks like in terms of building more housing. Cause I do believe we need more housing. I just am central to focusing on deeply permanent affordable housing, which leans on city resources and the government to be able to ensure that that housing stays affordable. So the, the zoning in that sense is, is kind of like a case-by-case basis in how we explore certain demolitions that are happening in the city. And then the other piece is drawing on the environmental concern. So I'd want to be able to explore what it would mean to making sure that, for example, people who have solar panels, like what are ways we can address development that happens to make sure people who have solar panels on their homes aren't essentially stifled in their ability to be able to engage in sustainability practices? So working on, on ways to, to work with the two of those. And a one way to do that is essentially working with those developers on making sure we can address any lost production or reallocation of panels or compensation of some sort. So in that way, I want to explore ways that everybody in the community can remain dignified in how they explore their housing. So I'm all for housing, but I do have the intention of, of essentially committing to deeply permanently affordable housing. So leaning on, for example, the Affordable Housing Trust, working to have institutions like Harvard and MIT give back more into the community so that we can be able to fund even nonprofits. Like we have the Cambridge Community Land Trust that is starting up and being able to invest in that is another great way to engage with permanently deeply affordable housing. So I hope that gives you a little more of a sense of how I view the housing issue.
Yeah, I mean, I saw on your website, you talk about breaking the YMB-NIMBY binary. Can you go into a little more depth about what you mean by that?
Yeah, so kind of like how I mentioned at the beginning of when I answered your question, there's this side to the YMB approach that again, like sometimes neglects some of the voices that I believe are centered to how we address housing. Because my philosophy is when we help the most vulnerable, it only uplifts all of us. So in that way, I have a desire to be intentional about our housing and making sure that people don't get kicked out. So they don't get priced out. So taking on an anti-displacement approach to housing, being conscientious of, yes, it's great that we're moving forward with being able to build more housing, but we also need to be intentional about what kind of housing we build and who gets left out of the conversation. Cause at the end of the day, who are we building the city for? On the other side is the NIMBY side. And it's essentially characterized by a group of people who don't really believe in building more housing. And again, like I, I could be streamlining both groups, but this is just how I, I want to re-center the, the campaign here in terms of how we navigate housing. But from the NIMBY side, I want to be able to push on more housing and especially in terms of how we navigate issues like homelessness and making sure we can explore social housing and other nonprofit work. But being able to push back on making sure that folks understand we do need more housing. Like we do have a housing shortage. It's just a matter of for whom and how do we build it?
Are there any like specific laws that, or changes that you would make on city council to the housing, to housing? You know, I mean, we've talked about, you know, most of the changes have, are on a market side. It sounds like you're looking for a different answer. Can you, do you have specific regulations in mind or something like that?
Yeah, so the biggest right now is making sure that the inclusionary zoning percentage does not go down. So some context there is we push for the multifamily zoning. And I mean, not weeks after we opened a conversation about decreasing our inclusionary zoning percentage down to 10%, which is right now 20%. I don't agree with that. Um, that's kind of an example of something I'd want to be able to push back on in terms of making sure we still maintain regulations that help us push for deeply permanent affordable housing. The other ways that I've, I've mentioned a bit of are leaning in on the Affordable Housing Trust and making sure we can get resources from institutions like Harvard, which is again, in a tricky situation right now with the federal administration.
Sure.
It also, we can also explore, again, assisting nonprofits like the Cambridge Community Land Trust. We can also explore social housing as a concept in terms of making sure the city pushes for what would essentially be an investment into building that housing so that we can repay it back. So that's also another thing that I would want to explore. On the housing side as well, this, this conversation gets neglected, but I did work in terms of advocating for the, against the closing of a homeless shelter in our city. TWC, the Transition Wellness Center. So another piece of the housing component that I want to work on is opening a new shelter for unhoused residents so that we can also combat some of the, some of the systemic issues regarding the intersections of socioeconomic status, racial injustice, and, and making sure that everyone is able to, to have some form of shelter.
Did you support the Rise Up program, the Universal Basic Income Pilot that was done in the last couple of years?
Absolutely, I, I do. And part of the advocacy work that I did in leading against the closing of the homeless shelter was actually making sure that we push on the city manager to allocate more. Because at, at a point in the city council meetings, we were seeing that vulnerable groups were kind of put up against each other. So we actually advocated on the city, on the city level to essentially make sure that we can keep Rise Up going, which is led by Sumbo and is doing great work there.
Yeah, we, we spoke on the show to Sumbo Sidiki about that program, trying to keep, you know, her work to try to keep that going.
Nice.
Let's see, we have 10. How would you, let me ask you this. When you look around the city, what would you do to improve the quality of life of the city? Or there, do you have ideas to improve the cultural life of the city? I know you say you want to preserve arts-related institutions. Can you get into that a little bit?
Yeah, so a huge piece of my platform and a particular community I care about a lot are artists. Right now, there are certain situations in the city, like for example, Starlight, where we have to have conversations on what it means to protect spaces that provide opportunities for the arts to thrive.
Yeah.
So that is something I would want to be making sure is protected. Another piece of that is when we're exploring things like housing or changes to city infrastructure, I'd want to make sure public art is preserved. I don't know if that will mean making sure that we are in partnership with artists to ensure that they are aware that these situations are happening so that we can be able to leverage advocacy, whether that means we put in policy work to make sure we're able to preserve that art. Also, there are opportunities for us to create affordable housing for artists. I mean, we look at cities like New York City and they're the hub of the arts. They have a thriving art scene and I believe we can make room for that in Cambridge. Whether it means we designate intentionally a certain project specifically for artists, it'd be so cool to essentially let artists know that there is space for them to be able to thrive in the city and bring their talents to life. And I have talked to artists in the city. I mean, one in particular that I've talked to is grew up here and essentially is being pushed out because they're trying to navigate work and also keep up with the artistic work that they want to do. And it's just hard to balance. We don't have access to many studio spaces. So what it'd look like to be in partnership with commercial buildings that are coming into the city and making sure we can build spaces like that so that our artists have access to being able to, to make music and things like that? So that's, those are just a few things I want to work on and making sure that our art scene is, is stays, stays alive.
Yeah. Were you, you know, a couple of years ago, the EMF space where all the studios were in Cambridge Port, just, you know, basically just kicked everybody out so they could turn it into condos? Would you look at using the, the council to push back on, on changes like that?
Absolutely, yes. I am not familiar, to be honest, with the story on EMF, but I definitely would want to be intentional about making sure voices like artists are uplifted in, in city council conversations. Cause most of these happen behind closed doors and a lot of people don't really know what's happening. So I want to be someone who's plugged into the community and making sure that folks know what's happening on the, on the city level.
Okay. In the, in the current environment, I mean, the economy is probably going to crash due to the White House interference and following commercial revenues and things like that. Would you support increasing taxes and fees if, to support some of your plans if necessary? Or if you think the budget should shrink with the shrinking economy, do you have ideas of where you would make cuts?
Yeah, so in terms of revenue resources, especially as you said, we're entering a, a time of fiscal uncertainty. There are ways that we can explore revenue resources. One, like we do still have buildings going up in Kendall Square. I know the biotech side has slowed down, but there are, there still is progress being made in terms of commercial buildings going up. So that's one place that we can still potentially count on. The second is being able to be in conversations and make them transparent about the role that Harvard specifically plays in investing back into the community. Our pilot agreement had about a one-year length. So it should be coming up pretty soon that we open up those conversations again. And Harvard can be a potential avenue for us to bring in more resources in a time of fiscal uncertainty. I would be open to exploring increasing residential and/or commercial taxes, but I am aware of some of the pressures that would put on a lot of residents. So I'd want to explore that in an equitable way to making sure that, again, like while we're trying to help people be able to afford to live here, we're not crushing them with even more costs. So I would want to approach that topic sensitively.
I just want, I've, I've told everyone I've talked about this, but I just think our parking permit is, you know, for if you're a, if you're a resident, it's $25 a year. Like, there's like so many, I, I mean, I have a car and I drive and it should be way more than that. It's so valuable and we're paying nothing for it.
Absolutely. I hear you there. There are so many creative ways that we can engage tapping into creating more revenue. And also we should, we should explore really what we're spending our money on currently in terms of our budget. So that is something I want to, I would want to be able to dive into more depth. But I, I know a lot of the frustration with some of the city council is around the budget, budgeting conversations and the role the city manager plays in that. Because some people do not know that, I believe, the city council can only take stuff out of the budget, but can't necessarily add into it. So that has been at, at times a place of frustration in terms of our budgeting process.
Sure. Sure. Um, well, I know you said you have a hard out pretty soon. Is there anything else that um, you'd like to discuss that we haven't covered? We have a, a lot of issues on your website that I was looking through, a lot of interesting things.
Yeah, and please feel free to engage with them and reach out to me. I'm someone who is receptive and wants to build on transparency and accountability in city government. So if there are ideas that people have who are watching this or yourself that want to share that with me, the same like you said with the permits, please do. I mean, I believe in a government where we can be collaborative. So in a time like this, we have to turn to each other and build community in that way. And I also want to point out that, hey, I ran in twenty twenty-three and I came in tenth of the nine seats. So I was quite close. And I'm coming back into this because I do have a deep desire to making sure that a lot of voices that have felt neglected in politics know that they have a seat at the table and to increase the access to civic engagement in our city. Because sometimes you're working a job and you can't access the meeting that you want to share a comment at. Or you don't know how to engage with our meeting agenda notes, which can be very overwhelming. So I'd want to also, as a city council, be able to work on how we can increase civic engagement, especially for marginalized communities in the city. So I hope that gives a, a bit of context into our campaign. And we, again, we welcome everybody and any conversation in terms of how we can make progress in the city. So I appreciate your time.
Oh yeah, thanks. I do have one more quick, quick question that I've been asking everybody. If, if you were on the council this past session, um, who would you have supported for mayor and if you want, and why?
It's a great question. I believe the conversation on mayor had been between Denise Sumble and Mark. I honestly know less about the internal dynamics that goes within that since we have a unique form of government.
Yeah.
But I would probably lean on having chosen Sumbo as our mayor. Especially since she led during COVID and uh, during, you know, again, back when we first had Trump for the first time. I believe she would be the person I would pick in terms of being able to lead the city.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think she, she had two terms in a row or, yeah, two terms in a row, which was pretty unique at the time, yeah. Well, okay, um, thanks for coming on our show. I, um, and thanks for being our guests. And uh, yeah, if you can think of anything else you want to talk about, feel free to reach out to me and um, we can add it on. And yeah, have, have a great campaign. Good luck during the campaign.
Thank you so much. Take care, Pete.
Take care. Thank you.